Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Today's work session will be a 2024 legislative update consisting of a presentation by Access Point Public Affairs, followed by our City Attorney's Office. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This afternoon's city council will receive a two-part update on the 2024 General Assembly session. The first presentation will be by the city's legislative liaison, Access Point Public Affairs LLC, and this will be followed by the City Attorney's Office, who will review any legislation which may require future action by the city council. At this time, I will ask Ms. Mindy Carlin, CEO of Access Point Public Affairs, to come to the podium. Mindy, how are you this evening?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's good to be back. It was quite a legislative session, a lot of new faces, and a lot that happened over the course of the session. So I will get right to it. You'll notice some themes in the structure of the update. So it's organized by the categories in your legislative agenda. The items that have just a dot are items that we were monitoring. If there's a check mark, it means whatever happened was what we wanted to happen. If there's little X, it means it's not consistent with what we wanted. And the shading, the shaded areas that you'll see here there on the left are budget items that I have highlighted throughout. So we'll start with public safety. And as you are all aware, it has been a part of your legislative agenda since we've been working with you to reduce the role of law enforcement officials in responding to mental health situations. There are three bills that were signed by the governor that we were monitoring in this category that are outlined on the slide. In addition, I wanted to highlight that the budget that was ultimately adopted by the General Assembly on May 13th and signed by the governor also included 4.7 million in general funds per year specifically for alternative transportation and alternative custody. It also included 3.6 million in the first year and 4.2 million in the second to support, provide ongoing support for seven crisis co-responding programs, otherwise known as the Marcus Alert implementation. So wanted to highlight those two budget items as well. Second on the agenda is to increase support for mental health and wellness services for our public safety officials. There was legislation highlighted here that passed related to those who may be exposed to toxic materials. This legislation was signed, was passed and signed by the governor and will be creating a work group to identify and analyze options to help ensure those public safety officials who may have been exposed are able to have that taken care of out for those items that are not covered by relevant health insurance. Protecting the current fee and commission structures for regional correctional facilities continued to be a priority. We were successful in doing that. The legislation that's highlighted on this slide, HB 912, would have made some pretty significant changes and restrictions. The ultimate version of this that was passed was consistent with what's already happening, and that is that the profits that are made through the operation of stores and telephone communications, et cetera, in local and regional jails must be used within that facility, which is what's happening already at Western Tidewater. So we were happy with how that ultimately ended up. I also wanted to highlight in the final budget that passed, it did include 250,000 general fund each year to establish a correctional officer career pipeline pilot program. And so if that's of interest, we can try to get some more information about what that may entail. Sticking with public safety, increasing training and education for law enforcement officials continues to be an area of focus for us. We did have one piece of legislation that we worked with members of our delegation on that would have required additional training for animal control officers. You'll see that's the first item highlighted that failed to advance. I do want to raise, part of the reason why that failed to advance is because there's nothing precluding localities from providing additional training to your animal control officers if you so choose. There just wasn't a comfort level in mandating that across the board for all. So we are able to do whatever we'd like to do with respect to that. The second item on this slide is a bill that passed with respect to universal certification and training for law enforcement officers. This was an item that we supported that was signed by the governor. And in this category, I also wanted to highlight, from the budget standpoint, is that the non-general fund appropriation for the fire programs fund was increased by 15 million in the first year and 18.3 in the second. And for those who aren't aware of this program, it's used to provide allocations to Virginia localities to help pay for training, construction of training centers, firefighting equipment, and protective clothing. So that was included in the budget that was passed. A few additional bills that I highlighted in the area of training and education for law enforcement had to do with training standards related to comprehensive harm reduction and drug use. There's one related to Alzheimer's disease and dementia, training for both dispatchers, firefighters, and others that was passed and signed by the governor. And then the final one, communication with individuals with autism spectrum disorder, legislation to require a minimum in training standards for this was also passed. I do want to highlight on that, that the training standards are required to be established by January of 2027. And, but the in-surface training requirement, you have until July 1 of 2028 for that to take place. So there's a pretty long lead time for that in terms of additional requirements that would fall to the locality. Enhancing retirement benefits for E-911 officers was added to the legislative platform this year. We worked with members of our delegation to bring forward legislation that would have done this. This was our first year working on this. Unfortunately, the bill was continued to the 2025 session. The hang-up with this was not a lack of recognition that those E-911 dispatchers should be able to receive enhanced retirement. The challenge was the state police also have dispatchers, and they were not included of their own choice. And so there was a concern about having the locals be able to move forward and offer those without the same for the state. So we have some ideas about how to maybe advance that during the off-session, so we'll have a more favorable outcome next year, assuming that is in your platform once again. And then also wanted to highlight that the budget did provide a total of 20 million general fund over the biennium for aid to localities with police departments. So that's the 599 funding. Protecting the ability to utilize the technology solutions that, as a part of the city's public safety efforts, was an additional public safety priority this year. There were two pieces of legislation that I wanted to highlight in this category. The first one will permit additional photo speed monitoring at high-risk intersections. That was signed and, or that was passed and signed by the governor. The second piece is one we would have preferred not pass, but it did get better than how it was originally introduced. This will require all state and local law enforcement agencies to provide DCJS with a list of all of the surveillance technologies procured by the agencies and departments on an annual basis. And so that'll be due November 1 of each year, and that was signed by the governor. There were two pieces of legislation related to Line of Duty Act changes. I believe the city attorney maybe will talk about this a little bit more, but those are included on this slide for your reference. And then you can see, it was a very busy public safety session. So we had a lot of good successes there. Shifting to transportation, wanted to highlight two items on the legislative side and then two budget items here. HB 1254 passed, which increased the, or changed the designation for bridges with a general condition rating of no more than five to be eligible for state of good repair funds. Currently, they had, they are required to be structurally deficient in order to be eligible. This was passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor. The second bill was one that we worked with Senator Jordan on, Senate Bill 322. This would have added maintenance of primary evacuation routes to the list of factors that the CTP would consider as it allocates funding through smart scale. Unfortunately, this legislation was continued to 2025, but with a letter from the chair of that committee to VDOT that they needed to work with the localities, including Suffolk, in the off-session to try to come to a resolution on that issue. That's something that Senator Jordan's been working on for some time. The two budget items I wanted to highlight first, the Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund. Allocations were made here in the amount of 10 million and change each year of the biennium. And then language was also included, instructing the CTP to deposit 90 million into the fund from transportation funds over the next six years. So on this, I want to highlight, we have a biennial budget in Virginia. So even though there's language in the budget, it doesn't tie the state to do that after that budget is no longer valid, but it was included in the budget. And so I wanted to note it. And then the second item in the budget, I know this had gotten the attention of a number of you related to toll relief, an additional 77 million in the first year, 24 in the second was included in the ultimate budget deal to expand toll relief. And this was provided to low-income individuals in localities that met a number of different factors. The one that was most impactful to Suffolk in not being included was a local distress score. And our locality did not score poorly enough, I'll say, in order to qualify. But all of the existing toll relief programs that are available today are, continue to be eligible for, or continue to be in place for eligible residents who live in Suffolk. So shifting to finance and regulatory legislation and budget items. So very, very pleased to share that the historic rehabilitation preservation tax credit program was expanded this session. This is something that had been attempted for many, many years. So what the legislation will do is increase from 5 million to 7.5 million, the maximum amount that an individual taxpayer can take in that tax credit. And so this has been a program, as you guys are all very well aware, has been used and significantly benefited the city of Suffolk. You can point to many projects within your, our locality. And so this will enable more, a bit more of an incentive for those who may be looking to do those kinds of projects. That was passed and signed by the governor. And then a second bill related to historic tax districts, legislation passed to allow the locality to establish a local historic tax district and provide tax incentives for conservation and renovation of historic structures. I believe the city attorney is going to be providing a bit more detail on this one as well. We continue to strongly oppose any unfunded mandates. There was a bill that would have provided some additional discretion with respect to timing for these, and unfortunately, that legislation was continued to 2025. One additional item related to the notice of assessment changes, legislation did pass here that will impact the notice requirements. But again, I saw this in the city attorney's slide, so he's gonna, they will be talking about that. Shifting to community development and planning, we had a lot of work this session that was really focused on protecting the land use authority that you all have today, which we know is one of the most important things that we do down there. There were a number of bills you'll see, the first two failed to advance. In this case, that's a good thing, which is why they have a little check mark. The first would have prohibited localities from requiring local traffic impact station, statements in certain cases. The next would have required a locality to include in its zoning ordinance ADUs, as defined in the bill, as a permitted accessory use. We were opposed to both of those bills which failed to advance. And then the third one will require local planning commissions to use the same approval process for residential development projects as is currently required for commercial. This legislation was passed and signed by the governor. And then one final bill I'll highlight here, legislation passed prohibiting a locality from enacting or enforcing an ordinance to ban the rental of a residential dwelling unit for 30 consecutive days or longer. Additional detail on that is provided on the slide, but this was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. We brought forward, on behalf of the city, legislation this session to attempt to increase the civil penalties for repeat zoning violations. We worked with our delegation on this. Unfortunately, this legislation was continued to 2025. We did get a little bit of a sense of what the challenge was here and are hopeful that if, next year, if this continues to be a priority of the city, if we focus it to Hampton Roads or more narrowly focused on our planning district, that that may kind of address some of the issues that legislators in other parts of the state had with the bill. So we'll look at that as an option if it's on the agenda. A couple good things that I wanted to highlight, legislation was passed to authorize a locality to adopt a healthy community strategy as part of your comprehensive plan. It's permissive, not a mandate. And some details about what that could include are listed. There also was legislation that passed to permit, related to vacant buildings and registrations of those and provide you with a bit more authority. Again, I saw this in the city attorney's slides, so I'll let them describe this in more detail. But this was also passed and signed by the governor. Community revitalization fund, this was expanded to allow all of the current provisions to be allowed to all localities. Currently, only the city of Richmond is eligible to establish a fund for these purposes. The business-ready, a new program was, was launched in legislation, Virginia Business Ready Expedited Permitate Program. This will be able to be implemented by the VEDP for two, up to two sites and four projects. That's statewide, so I'm not sure that we'll have a project eligible, but it was passed and signed by the governor. And then also on this slide in the left column, wanted to highlight that the budget did provide increased funding for the business-ready sites fund. So with the additional $40 million over the biennium that was included in the budget, the total funding for that program is $274 million. A couple other community development and planning budget items that I wanted to call out for you guys. An additional, additional funding was invested in a new Virginia Make-Ready Initiative. The intent of this program is to help some of those projects that were, broadband projects that were supported by ARPA to be able to move forward more efficiently and quickly. The VATI program, which we certainly have benefited from in Suffolk, funding for that was reduced over the biennium, but that was in anticipation of the broadband equity access and deployment program. And even with that reduction for VATI, there's still $20 million for that program over the course of the biennium. With respect to the BEAD program, there was language that clarifies that that funding could be used to include on, excuse me, resiliency efforts related to pole attachments, replacements and undergrounding and all uses, other uses that were already outlined in the federal law. Additional funding in the amount of 12.5 million per year was allocated for the Virginia Housing Trust Fund, and each of the planning districts will receive an additional 25,000 over the course of the biennium. Moving on to human services, two bills I wanted to highlight here. First of all, legislation was passed to establish a process for local departments of social services to conduct background checks for current and prospective employees. And so this was legislation that we supported. It did pass and was signed by the governor. And then there also was legislation that was considered but was ultimately vetoed by the governor. This would have directed each local department of social services to develop and enter into a written agreement with the local workforce investment board. So this legislation passed the legislature, but the governor then vetoed it. Several budget items in the human service category that I wanted to highlight, we were strongly supporting funding for a centralized training academy model that can help provide streamlined, significant training resources for local departments of social services to help our family service workers deal with the really challenging work that they're doing. That was funded in the budget, so we were pleased about that. Additional funding for kinship care and parental agreement program, additional funding for Step Virginia to help keep pace, to help that program keep pace with inflation. On top of that, another 7.5 million per year was included in the budget for CSB workforce and some additional funding for CSA and, excuse me, and some additional funding for community health worker positions in, at local health departments was also included in, in the human services portion of the budget. Okay, sorry, talking kind of fast. Education and workforce development. So I want to start here with school construction. So we did support legislation that would have enabled localities to put forward a referendum to assess an additional local sales and use tax to support that. That, under current law, is only available in certain localities. This would have expanded it statewide. It did pass the legislature, but the governor vetoed that, so that will not go into effect. But on the other hand, this, some additional clarification was provided through legislation with respect to the school construction fund and program that will allow that fund to support regional, excuse me, joint or regional schools. So wanted to highlight that. With respect to school construction in the budget, an additional 80 million in non-general fund per year was allocated to the school construction fund. So this is the first deposit from the casino gaming revenues to school construction. And then on top of that, 200 million was allocated in FY '25 and 50 million in FY '26 for school construction loans. And it also included language requiring that those interest rates be discounted yet responsive to market rates. So this, wanted to highlight that as well. Legislation was passed that would permit a school board with concurrence from the local governing body to establish a capital reserve fund. This was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. And while we diligently worked to secure $600,000 to help support the Workforce Trades and Innovation Center, our partnership with Camp Community College, that funding ultimately wasn't included in the budget. We're working with members of our delegation and others to try to find other ways to, to raise that funding to support that really important workforce program that, that is in the works. Couple other, a number of highlights on the budget side with education and workforce, I included on that left column, you'll see what the city's estimated direct aid distribution is for each fiscal year. In addition to that, the budget included an increase in the state appropriation from lottery funds for the infrastructure and operations per pupil fund. The impact for Suffolk is noted on the slide. Additional funding was provided in the budget to update the grocery sales tax hold harmless, to ensure that you're not harmed by the fact that that's no longer assessed at the state level. 371.3 million was added to the budget to modify and expand support for at-risk students. There was legislation that would have shifted this to SOQ. That legislation ultimately did not advance, and so that at-risk add-on program remains as an optional part of the required local max. A number of compensation items in the education space are highlighted here. Funding for the state share of a 3% compensation increase for both instructional and support staff was included. So that's 3% in each year of the biennium. And I know you're aware of this, but just wanted to highlight that this, in order for a locality to access that, they are required to provide at least a 1.5% increase as a match. And then some additional funding was directed from literary fund revenues to offset school employee retirement costs. A couple items, a number of items related to literacy were included in the budget, added funding in some categories and removed it in others. That's highlighted here. An additional 72.1 million to provide expanded and targeted support for English language learners, an increase in the reimbursement rate for school breakfasts, and then some language that impacts the lab schools was also included in the budget. There was also funding each year to provide grants to support school-based health clinics, as well as language directing the Department of Education to establish statewide contracts in two categories, mental health services for public school students, as well as attendance recovery services. So localities could purchase off of those statewide contracts if you wanted access to either of those items. Adjustments were weighed for Virginia Preschool Initiative, and additional funding was provided related to the, those who are currently participating in the childcare subsidy program and mixed delivery program, so that you won't see a drop-off when that federal funding goes away. A couple, a number of items, it was a pretty busy session with respect to environment and utilities as well. Included for the first time this session was a desire to advance Included for the first time this session was a desire to advance efforts to address waterworks treatment staffing challenges. We worked with Senator Jordan on SB 554, and what this did was provided additional flexibility with respect to certification and licensure reciprocity with neighboring states. And so right now, it's required that you have a certain number of years of experience in Virginia in order to get your license. This provided flexibility with respect to that, so hopefully will help to address some of those workforce challenges and get people online more quickly. There was legislation that was considered that, that did not advance, which is why it has a check mark, we didn't want it to advance, that would have provided some pretty significant restrictions related to citing of energy facilities. I wanted to include that because it probably will come back, so it's just something to be aware of. A couple items related to funding for electric charging stations and related requirements. Neither of the, one failed to advance, the other was vetoed by the governor. Again, I want you to be aware of it just so that we can be watching it for next session. There were a couple new things in this category as well. The first was to increase funding for forest sustainability and/or support tools to encourage the maintenance of forested land. There were a couple bills that passed and were signed by the governor that are highlighted on this slide that are consistent with that priority. The budget that was passed also included 2.5 million in general fund for 2025 for the Forest Sustainability Fund. One additional bill that was introduced but was actually vetoed by the governor, but also wanted to highlight that $1 million in general fund in the first year of the biennium was included in the budget to support the Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund as well. The second, the second new item in environment and utilities was to promote farmland preservation programs. You'll see there are three bills that were listed here, all that would have made changes to the land preservation tax, or actually, the first two related to the land preservation tax credit, increasing the threshold, and then the second one, increasing the maximum amount. Unfortunately, neither of these bills advanced. There was just a lot of concern about tax credit programs generally by appropriations committee staff, and so I think that was what the hurdle was with those. And then there was also legislation related to recordation tax revenues, and that was also, that legislation also failed to advance. And that's what I got. Happy to answer any questions. It was a really, really busy session, had a lot of wins, a lot of lessons learned, and that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carron. Council, questions or comments? No questions, no comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Some of the things that we were pursuing, we were going to make sure we try to, we got to try to put that back in for the next session. Is that our plan?
We'll bring the legislative package back to you and if you counsel, you borrow some words to go back.
Because there might have been a couple of things in there that we could have maybe go back at that could have been put in there. We didn't get through this time, but, you know, you got to keep pushing the button to get through, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler-Barler.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back to the toll relief because I'm confused now. So Suffolk, because we, as you said, weren't, we didn't score poorly enough, generally is not eligible, but individual citizens can still get toll relief based on their own household income.
Yeah, sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. So there are existing toll, so there is an existing toll relief program that is open to eligible Suffolk residents that has nothing to do with what passed this year. And that program is still in effect, and no changes were made to that. What I was referring to, the additional toll relief, and I can tell you, I think the intent and how we all expected that to happen was that that was going to be additional toll relief for the residents of Portsmouth and Norfolk. I think what they found in writing the budget language, they couldn't write Portsmouth and Norfolk, and so the way that they chose to define who, the localities in which residents could access that additional toll relief, brought in some other localities as well with this fiscal stress index scores, like Franklin, for example, and I think Hampton and Newport News, that kind of didn't make sense. But I think, I think given that's the approach that they took, we may choose to include that or not in our legislative agenda for next year so that we could be a bit more proactive. Certainly, if the city of Franklin, you know, one might think logically that residents of the city of Franklin, if they have access, that residents of Suffolk should also, you know, purely by geographic proximity. But, so I apologize, I wasn't clear.
No, no, I just, it's a confusing thing. The thing that I was concerned about was there are currently existing programs that weren't affected that people can still access.
Yes, ma'am.
We just didn't get anything additional.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I've got a few comments, and I'll go to the toll relief because I can assure you that caught me off guard when I first heard of what was proposed and what was passed. And you're right, from a rational standpoint, just looking at it is how can Suffolk not be included but Franklin is? You have to drive through Franklin to get to the same tunnels that our citizens have to use, and we have citizens that fall well within the individual guidelines, which are maxed out, I think, at a $50,000 per year income. And there's some other caveats there as far as where the location is. This fiscal stress index, I did a little bit of research on that, and we actually, the cutoff for that was 104, I believe, and in this case, it's kind of like golf, you want, you want to, well, you, you would want to have a lower number to be in a better financial position than a higher number. But I think for lack of any other metric, there is only a certain amount of revenue that was available for toll relief. And it was explained to me that you just can't arbitrarily pick a couple of cities and say, I want to use Portsmouth, I have to, Portsmouth and Norfolk, and we'll leave everybody out. That it has to be based on a specific metric of some type. It could have possibly been based on a planning district, which in this case would be the Hampton Roads Planning District, which would have had to encompass all the South Side cities and the peninsula, but there's not enough money for that. So by using the stress index, they were able to include Portsmouth and Norfolk, but ended up picking up Newport News, Hampton and Franklin, but it precluded Suffolk, Chesapeake and Virginia Beach out of the equation because our stress index is 100.4, 100.6, and Chesapeake and Virginia Beach is 100. So unfortunately for some of our citizens, our financial position and financial wherewithal precluded us from this additional reduction or aid as far as toll relief is concerned. We still qualify, everybody still qualifies for 50%, but under this new program, it's actually 100%. You pick up the other 50. So my goal would be looking into it in the future to see how we could possibly adjust the metric to where we could include the other Hampton Road cities or Suffolk, obviously, in particular. So our citizens would be able to take advantage of it at that time. But this came out really, really quick. I don't think anybody knew anything about it. I mean, it was just negotiated, done, and here we are. But it's very interesting, and it's, they say, we have, I think, a lot of citizens that could have taken advantage of this program, and it'd be our goal to get this into the, from my standpoint, you know, as long as everybody agrees, to get this into our legislative agenda also. And we'll also be having some conversations on the regional level as well because Chesapeake and Virginia were not allowed to participate, I mean, Chesapeake and Virginia Beach were not allowed to participate, but I think it affects our citizens considerably more. I think our citizens are more prone to work on the other side maybe than someone in Virginia Beach coming to Suffolk. So, so much for that. It looks like the public safety initiatives, for the most part, were very successful, and I'm not going to ask a bunch of questions, but the TDO, alternative transportation, I'd be interested to know that who would qualify as a provider for that transportation. I mean, that's a good thing that you can use alternative transportation, but that's only going to be effective as to the number of individuals that we would have available to us to provide that transportation, but that'd be welcome for us and the jail, and I'm skipping over a lot. Yeah, we got an attorney coming up too, so I have to talk faster. No, I just said, I know we still got the city attorney, but I was just looking at this, the speed monitoring devices, I'm not exactly sure if that's, that's going to allow us to actually place speed monitoring devices in particular areas that have had a traffic fatality?
It's got to have a school associated with it.
Okay, some else we can talk about there. Going right along, there's one other one, and it had to do with the, well, there's a bunch, but the solar issue, the way they were established in the guidelines, that's, I know it was continued to next year, but from my standpoint, I think that should be up to the localities as to what they want to allow. Because what they have here as far as what would be mandated to allow is considerably more than what we as a city have agreed to, which was 1% of ag, which is a big difference in 4% of 430 square miles. You're looking at a lot of what would be mandated from the state for our city to allow for solar, and I think that needs to stay a local decision all the way around. And with that, I know there was a lot to talk about, and we'll have a lot for next year, and like you said, we learned something this year. So moving forward, thank you very much for all your hard work, as I know it's, it's been a lot of work. Yes, Councilman Fawcett?
On the, on the enhanced E-911 benefits, I know it's continued to 25. What is your feeling, do you think that, where would you need to go to inch that so that they would be able to take part in that? Because I mean, that, that's something I think is a big deal for, for any city or anybody in the Commonwealth, is the 911 dispatchers are the foothold of the operation. So I'm kind of hoping that, I don't know, you, you were there, so you get a kind of a flavor for what they might have talked about or where we need to kind of funnel or channel that energy to get it.
Okay, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. So I think that, I know that what we experienced when the bills were considered was actually really strong support from the legislators that 911 dispatchers receive enhanced retirement benefits. There really was no pushback on what we were seeking. I think where the challenge was, was that the state police did not include in their budget requests. So obviously, so for us, if we wanted to implement enhanced retirement benefits, that requires local funding, not state funding, so there's no fiscal impact to the Commonwealth if that decision was made by the, by the locality or any other locality. For state police to offer enhanced retirement, that requires state funding. And so while they weren't advocating in support of getting the ability and the funding to offer enhanced retirement benefits for those state police dispatchers, which serve a very different function, I've learned a lot about this, serve a very different function in many cases. They weren't asking for it, but they expressed concerns about something moving forward that didn't include them, really from a workforce standpoint. So looking to next year, you know, my plan is to call on some of those elected officials who sat at the dais and said, I agree, we need to do this, we just have to figure out how not to leave the state dispatchers behind, is to have some discussions with those policymakers in the office session with the state police there as well, so that if the state police continues to kind of drag their feet and not strongly advocate for that, the legislators will know that, and hopefully not let that keep those who want, like the city of Suffolk that wants that flexibility to move forward. So this was added to the agenda, you know, in the fall, so we really didn't have a lot of time to do advance work, assuming this is going to continue, you know, we have more time to have some of those conversations that hopefully will position us a bit better.
Yeah, I'm hoping they'll think about that and, and close that gap a little bit. I know the state police has somebody that advocates for them at the level, they have somebody that works pretty diligently, and I can't, in my mind, think of why they would hop on it. If everybody up there is in favor of it, I mean, it's not going to hurt them a bit at all to get this program. If anything, it'll help. So hopefully they'll close that gap.
And I'll share, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Suffolk was really a leader on this, and we had one of our, was she our head? The head of our, our local 911 dispatch came down to Richmond and actually testified and did so very, you know, passionately, and it really helped for them to hear from her. And, and so I think, again, it's not a lack of desire, but I think sometimes you just got to hold folks to the fire, and hopefully we'll be able to do that in advance of next session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carron.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, at this time, the city attorney's office has some items they'd like to discuss also on the General Assembly.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we are here to provide you with the annual legislative update that we provide each year to city council. This year, at the General Assembly, there are approximately 2,284 bills introduced, and of that, a little less than half passed, that's about 1,046 bills passed. We don't have enough time tonight to summarize all of those bills, so we've sort of prioritized what we're going to talk about. And so the bills that we're going to talk about are things that may impact the city's budget, they may require some administrative changes, and then to also outline those things that have been added to the Code of Virginia that'll, that provide additional options for city council. Each of you should have a packet of this presentation, so you'll have those bills, you can review them and decide if you want to move forward with those optional items. And so each of the attorneys from the office are going to take a few of these bills, and we will start off with Deputy City Attorney Stephanie Pugh.
Good afternoon. Our first bill actually affects you. City Council salaries, House Bill 456, there's an increase to the statutory salary caps for the members of city councils, and it would require a prior hearing prior to adopting an ordinance to set aside, or excuse me, to set the city council salaries. This amends Virginia Code 15.2-14, 14.6. City council will learn tonight that you can exercise your discretion to adopt an ordinance. Just so you're aware, as I said, it requires a public hearing, and if you agree to adopt an ordinance, you would need to do that four months prior to your election. And the increase, should you adopt it and there be a public hearing and the ordinance presented and approved, it would take effect July 1st of 2025. House Bill 1019, this is related to health insurance for local employees. This bill permits localities to allow participation in its group health insurance program for any non-benefitted employee, including members of governing bodies. If such non-benefitted employer governing body member is not authorized, otherwise, excuse me, entitled to participate, then they would have to reimburse the locality for the full cost of their participation. House Bill 1488, which is also Senate Bill 413, deals with local government standardization of public notice requirements for certain meetings, hearings, or intended actions. Basically, this bill standardizes the frequency with which and the length of time in which notices of certain meetings, hearings, and other intended actions of localities have to be published. The notice provisions, including the bill, are organized into three different categories. Publication required at least seven days before the meeting, hearing, or intended action. Publication required twice, with the first notice appearing no more than 28 days before, and the second notice appearing no less than seven days before the meeting, hearing, or intended action. And third, publication required, excuse me, three times, with the first notice appearing no more than 35 days before, and the third notice appearing no less than seven days before the 35, excuse me, seven days before the meeting, hearing, or intended action. And so this bill relates to a lot of different policies that the city uses, and so they would each need to be reviewed individually to see if we comply with the new law. Under education, House Bill 281, Senate Bill 13. Under education, House Bill 281, Senate Bill 13, this deals with allowing a locality by ordinance to provide for the waiver of any requirements for zoning permits for the operation of a child day program in an office building as defined by the bill, provided that that facility satisfies the requirements for state licensure as a child day program. And council, this is one of those bills that you can exercise your discretion to adopt an ordinance, should you choose. Under administration of government, House Bill 818 and Senate Bill 36, this point, we're going to get into our FOIA bills. And so this particular bill exempts certain public meetings from the definition of meeting under the Virginia FOIA Act. Clarify that three or more persons of a public body may appear and participate in such public meetings without violating the act. I know previously that was a problem, but that is changing. And this is provided that there's no public business, transact, or discuss. Also, this bill would exempt members of a public body who attend a public meeting of a second public body without violating the act, again, provided that no public businesses transact or discuss. And then finally, this bill would define what a public business is, as activity that a public body has undertaken or proposed to undertake on behalf of the people it represents. House Bill 816, which is also Senate Bill 244, this provides that the provisions for conducting a meeting by electronic means due to a state of emergency stated in the Virginia FOIA Act are declarative of existing laws since March 20th, 2020, with respect to the governor's declared state of emergency due to COVID-19. Under this bill, any meeting by a public body using electronic communication means occurring from the date until July 1st, 2021, and any authorized lawful action taken at, at it is validated with respect to FOIA if the body provided public notice, public access, and public comment commensurate with the requirements of the existing FOIA provisions regarding electronic enclosed meetings. And so our last FOIA bill that we'll talk about today is House Bill 1040, Senate Bill 85, deals with the definition of a caregiver. Provides that for purposes of determining whether a quorum is physically assembled and an individual member of a public body who is a person with a disability or a caregiver, as defined in the bill, uses remote participation that counts towards the quorum, as if the individual is physically present here in chambers. The bill also provides that the participation policy adopted by a public body, as required by the Virginia Freedom Act, Freedom Information Act, shall not prohibit or restrict any individual member of the public body who is participating in, in all virtual meeting or who's using remote participation from voting on matters before the body. And this would be one of those bills that there are numerous policies that are related to, and that they would need to be reviewed for compliance. Next, you will hear from Assistant City Attorney Rebecca Powers.
Thank you. I'm going to begin tonight on, with counties, cities, and towns, and we're going to start with HB, House Bill 467, or Senate Bill 354, establishment of localities by, of certain real estate contract disclosures prohibited. This bill prohibits localities from establishing or enforcing a mandatory disclosure requirement for a real estate licensee, any party to, to a contract for the sale or listing of residential property, or any authorized agent of such party. The bill provides that prohibited mandatory disclosures include mandatory notifications in contracts, contract amendments, or addenda, advertising, other promotional materials, and subsequent deeds after the initial deed is recorded related to the sale of residential real estate. This bill amends Virginia Code Section 15.2-983.1, and there are no required UDO, City Code, or policy amendments. The next bill was referenced by the consultant, House Bill 478 and Senate Bill 49, Community Revitalization Fund, expanding use for all localities. This bill expands the current provision of law allowing for the establishment of a community revitalization fund for the purpose of preventing neighborhood deterioration to apply to all localities. Currently, only the city of Richmond is authorized to establish, to establish such a fund. This bill amends Virginia Code Section 15.2-958.5, and all related policies should be reviewed for compliance. Moving on to House Bill 650, zoning residential and electrical generation projects, period of validity. This bill provides that the conditions of a special exception or special use permit may include a period of validity. However, in the case of a special exception or special use permit for residential and electrical generation projects, the period of validity shall be no fewer than three years. The bill provides that for so long as a special exception, special use permit, or conditional use permit remains valid, no change or amendment to any local ordinance, map, resolution, rule, regulation, policy, or plan adopted subsequent to the date of the approval of the special exception, special use permit, or conditional use permit shall adversely affect the right of the developer or his successor in interest to commence and complete an approved development in accordance with the lawful terms of the special exception, special use permit, or conditional use permit, unless the change or amendment is required to comply with state law, or there has been a mistake, fraud, or a change in circumstances substantially affecting the public health, safety, or welfare. This bill amends Virginia Code Sections 15.2-2209.1:2 and 15.2-2286, and there are no required policy or UDO, City Code, or City Code amendments. Moving on to House Bill 755, civil penalties for certain local property violations in industrial and commercial areas. This allows localities by ordinance to chain, to charge enhanced civil penalties for certain local property violations on property that is zoned or utilized for industrial or commercial purposes. This bill amends Virginia Code Section 15.2-901, and this is one of the one, one of the bills that Stephanie referenced, in which if you choose to, to take action, the city council may exercise discretion to adopt such an ordinance. House Bill 947, Local Government Powers, Regulation of Tobacco, Nicotine, and Hemp Product Retail Sale Locations. This allows a locality to regulate the retail sale locations of tobacco products, nicotine vapor products, alternative nicotine products, or hemp products intended for smoking for any such retail sale location, and may prohibit a retail sale location on property within 1,000 linear feet of a daycare center or a public, private, or parochial school. This bill adds Virginia Code Section 15.2-912.4. And again, this is one of the bills where if the city council, if you determine that it is appropriate, city council may exercise discretion and adopt such an ordinance. House Bill 1415, Civil Penalty for Demolition of Historic Structures. This bill authorizes any locality to adopt an ordinance establishing a civil penalty for the raising, demolition, or moving of a building or structure that is located in a historic district, or that has been designated by a governing body as a historic structure or landmark, in violation of an ordinance that no such building or structure shall be raised, demolished, or moved without the approval of a review board. The bill provides that such civil penalty shall not exceed the market value of the property as determined by the assessed value of the property at the time of the raising, demolition, or moving of the building or structure. This bill amends Virginia Code Section 15.2-2306, and should city council choose to exercise its discretion, you may adopt such an ordinance. House Bill 1486 and Senate Bill 48, this is also another bill that was referenced by the consultant. This deals with vacant buildings and registration. This bill permits the city by ordinance to require the owner of any building that has been vacant for at least 12 months, and one, that needs, that meets the definition of derelict building in relevant law; two, that meets the definition of criminal blight in relevant law; or three, in which a locality has determined a such, a person is living without the authority of the owner to, to register such building annually. Under current law, any city and certain towns are permitted to require the owner of any building that has been vacant for at least 12 months and meets the definition of derelict building in relevant law to register such building annually. This bill amends Virginia Code Section 15.2-983, and again, this is one of the, one of the bills that if city council chooses to exercise discretion, you may adopt such a resolution, or such an ordinance. Moving on to housing, House Bill 7, excuse me, 578 and Senate Bill 538 deal with the Uniform Statewide Building Code violations and fines. That bill increases from $2,500 to $5,000, the minimum amount, and from $5,000 to $10,000, the maximum amount that any person, firm, or corporation shall be fined when convicted of a third or subsequent offense of violating the provisions of the Uniform Statewide Building Code committed within 10 years of, of another such offense, after having been at least twice previously convicted of such an offense. The bill also adds penalties for similar violations committed by owners of a blighted multifamily property. This bill amends Virginia Code Section 36-106, and requires City Code Section 14-34 to be amended to confirm, to conform to the updated fines set forth in the bill. And I will now pass the baton on to my colleague, Assistant City Attorney Sean Dolan.
Good afternoon. The next item, we have a couple of taxation items, and then there'll be a slide on a constitutional referendum this fall. This item says that city council may exempt certain personal property from taxation, that being farm machinery, equipment, implements used in indoor controlled environment, commercial, agricultural facility. The next item is that council may by resolution permit the treasurer to engage in longer installment payment for taxes, up to 72 months. The final item that I have for my slides is just information regarding a voter referendum this fall in the 20, November 5th election. And what it does is expands a current exemption for military veterans who have died in, in combat, to died in the line of duty, so it's a different definition. And so that would expand, and that's going to be a constitutional referendum. Our next presenter is Assistant City Attorney Patrick McAluso. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First bill that I have is House Bill 599. It's on education. It's going to permit a school board with the concurrence of a local governing body to establish a capital reserve fund from the unspent funds from a previous year. Doesn't require any action from you, but you could get and ask for a concurrence from the local school board. On taxation, House Bill 639, Senate Bill 677, involves real estate property tax and the notice of changes. So in any year that the real estate property tax had, would have an increase in 1% or more of the tax levied, the notice would have to come with a comparison table showing the tax rate that would levy the same amount from the previous year. More important for our departments, make sure we, we comply with that. Moving on to administration of government, we have House Bill 299. It allows any locality to exempt from taxes for pet licensure taxes, any animal that was a police or military dog. So that's one of the bills that, at your discretion, can pass a matching ordinance. Once again, taxation. This involves the Virginia Growth and Opportunity Act. The most important element to this is go grants that are granted to a locality. The, the local match amount is now going to be half of the grant amount rather than the entire grant amount, so it could be easier to have more grants funded. On taxation, Senate Bill 240, property tax exemption for surviving spouses of armed forces for members who died in the line of duty, just expands the tax exemption that's currently available. Just another, review our policies, make sure that we're in compliance. On elections, for any vacancies in local elections, a public meeting would have to be, occur seven days prior to making any appointment for any unexpected vacancies that come up. Hopefully, we're not going to have to cross that bridge, but be aware of it. More on elections, for precincts and polling places, any time that they're going to change, we pass any ordinances that change, any boundary lines or precincts. We have to send notice to all affected voters at least 30 days prior to the next election rather than 15. On county, cities, and towns, you now have a bill HB, HB 619, that allows localities to designate military-centered community zones, which could make us eligible for certain, certain tax benefits. So this might be something that council will want to look at in its discretion to adopt in ordinance. For HB 914, involves local historic districts. It allows the locality to establish a local historic district and provides incentives for doing such, including tax rebates. It's in council's discretion to provide any such incentives. On motor vehicles, HB 144 allows, sorry, so HB, HB 144, it's a change in speed limits, requires the Department of Transportation to notify local departments when any speed limit changes would occur. So related to it is Senate Bill 336. This was touched on a little bit before, but now we have an opportunity to place more speed monitoring devices in intersections that pose a significant risk. Those can be designated by our law enforcement agency for any segments where a traffic fatality has occurred since January 1st, 2014. Wildlife and life, wildlife, inland fisheries, and boating, HB 1053 gives our agencies the power to destroy and dispose of any abandoned water crafts that may be in our waterways. And at this time, that's all the slides I have for you, so I'm going to turn this back over to our city attorney.
So by way of summary, there is, this slide is, is the incorrect slide. There's only one required action by city council, and that's to amend Section 14-34 of the City Code. Because our penalties no longer match what's in the state code, we will need to amend that. Part of what we do, in addition to providing a presentation to you, we have provided a memo to each of the departments outlining things that they need to look at, things that may need to be changed in their policies, and the planning department is aware that this needs to be brought forward. Since this isn't a UDO amendment, it doesn't need to go through the planning commission, it can come directly to city council. This is a City Code amendment. And then the last slide is, is a, kind of a summary of all of the, the options. I'm not going to go back through those. I just put them here so that it's easier reference for city council on all of the different bills that have provided some additional options for city council. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Councilman Rector?
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for that presentation. My only question is sort of a procedural, procedural question, because a lot of these things, the, that have been passed, say, at city council's discretion, if we want to take up. Do we have some kind of mechanism in place to review all these myriad things to decide whether it's, it's an avenue that we wish to pursue?
So, so in the past, we've sort of left it to city council with, with meeting with the city manager to decide what you want to do. The, the City Code lays out if an individual city man, city mem, city council member wants to put something on the agenda, you can certainly do it as a motion under new business, or if four or more want to put it onto the agenda, it can be placed on the agenda. There's never been really a formal process for these. Some of them show back up because it is things that city council members are interested in, and they've talked with the city manager, and he puts it on the agenda. So it would really be up to city council to decide if you want to have a formal discussion about it, or do it in sort of the informal way we've done in the past. about it or do it in sort of the informal way we've done in the past.
Councilman Fossey?
I just want on SB 336, can someone give me some clarification here? Because I know that these monitoring devices that we have, I mean, this has got a little bit of different language than what we've been told.
So, so this, as, as a, one thing that's not in the title of this, and so it will probably change your mind about whether or not you're interested in this at all, is yes, there, in what, the thing that they've defined as a high safety area, if we set up cameras in that space, 100% of the funds are paid to the state. There's a state fund that's designated for those funds. It's not like what we have for work zones and school zones where the, the funds come back to the city and the city can use that to fund the cameras. So a different mechanism would need to be put in place in order to operate cameras in these high safety zones, assuming we have some that qualify.
Yeah, well, you just defined it because I'm not interested in giving the funds to the state, period, because they don't give enough back to us on, on those things. But I just wanted to be clear on it.
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, we heard one way we do it with the cameras we have now, and I wanted to make sure I understood what this verse, version of it.
Yeah, they've added a new option, but the new option requires the city to pay the funds to the state.
Yeah, we're not going to do that. Okay.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, and along with that is the definition of high-risk intersection segment. Robert and I got together, Robert provided that to me, and that's where I mentioned earlier, it has to be almost linked to a, a school zone within 1,000 feet, and that definition really draws where you can put it. And I don't think we have any that really fall in that scenario.
Councilman Bennett, you had requested to speak, we'd still like to speak.
No, that, that question was asked, that's my question about cameras. That's what it was.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or comments? To Councilman Rector's point as to what further discussion we'd like to have on some of these particular items, I appreciate the city attorney putting the list on the back, which is just a synopsis of what we may want to do on particular items. I would prefer that sometime within the next week or so, that you maybe communicate those to either the city manager or myself, and then we can come up with a little consensus of who, you know, how many folks want to speak to any one thing or not worry about it at all, and then maybe we can bring it up again in a work session or get it on the agenda to talk about. I think that's probably the best way to go about it, is take this home, digest it, look at it, and see what you have interest in. I mean, I just jotted down some numbers as we were talking. And some of these, I think we definitely need to address, we had the opportunity to address them, but I'll save those comments for later. Councilman Rector?
I do have a quick question. In regards to the raising or demolishing of historic structures in a historic area, does that have any impact on, I mean, every now and then the city has to take charge of a situation because it's, it, it's a public nuisance or a public safety hazard. Will that impede the city's ability to be able to raise a structure if, if it comes to that, if we have to?
No, the, the city still has the, and the, has the ability and the obligation to take down unsafe structures even if they are in the historic zone. This is dealing with how, demolishing historic properties without having gone through the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Okay, thank you for that.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Sorry, late breaking. I just had a question about this, the requirement of owners of certain vacant buildings. What's the point of an annual registration of a vacant building? Is that mean?
I, I don't know the answer to that, why it was put on there. I, I think that there, I, I think it, there may be localities that have problems identifying who, and, and sometimes we do have problems identifying who is the owner of the building. We do spend, the city does spend a, some money to have to do title searches to find, when we take down buildings, to find who the owners are. We're still going to have that obligation. I, I think this just makes it easier for the inspector to have a person to talk to with maintenance items related to a vacant building.
Thank you.
Councilman Fossey, you think?
One last thing. You know, you indicate on here that city council may exercise discretion to, to adopt an ordinance. Are you saying in here that there is nothing that we have in our ordinance now or anywhere on the books now that would cover a specific item if it's identified that we may want to take additional information or adopt an ordinance? I mean, some of these things, are they already embedded somewhere in our UDO or our?
Some of them may be in there, but they, these are, these are new things the General Assembly has added. Many of them are where one jurisdiction was allowed to do it and everyone else was not, and they've, as time goes on, they, they get rid of those and they add every jurisdiction. And so it may, it may be something that's brand new to everybody, or it may be something that other localities have been allowed to do, and we have not, and now we can. A few of these may be things that are in the UDO that we have one way because that's the way the code was written, but now the code gives us some flexibility to do something different. That's, that's why it's optional.
I mean, there's some, on the items you listed on the back, there are some real items on here that could, we really should take a look at and maybe come up with an ordinance on these specific items, but this, this list here is really pretty, it's a good list. I think there's something here for each one of these that could, could not be communicated or talked about. Might be interesting to come up with something on some of these. I just throw one out, and, and that's like the one on the tobacco use, for instance. That might be a, something we would look at if, you know, if it benefits us, if we have something that could possibly get in close to that range of what is described here. So, I mean, I think there's some options here. Thanks, that's it.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. City Attorney, thank you and your staff for your presentation. That concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed session this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body or specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel. And the discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for appointments and the assignment, appointments, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments are shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Clean Community Commission, the Community Policy and Management Team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the Sister Cities Commission, the Southeastern Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, the Southside Network Authority, the Suffolk Development Housing Authority, and the Tidewater Youth Services Commission.
Counsel, a motion been presented for consideration. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilman Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned, we'll reconvene at 6:00 PM.